Yeah, I think it's working. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It now being seven P M. I'll start with a roll call from the far end.
Martin again.
Tom again.
Paul Green.
Rich Canong, I am the chair and we are glad to have the presence of the Arundel Fire Chief here to help us discuss the fire ordinance and changes that he would like to see us make. And we, we went through this meeting. Over twenty nine, yeah. I was gonna say two weeks ago, but it wasn't, it was more like five. And we, we have some good ideas to work on. I'm sure we have an extra copy here.
What was that?
That's the minutes from the first
All the minutes, okay.
And we laid out all the stuff we were gonna cover. Not like six things? Yeah, we had, had six things that we were looking at. I brought my coffee, but I didn't, I printed one out and I brought it with me, but I know she put some in the package. No, I don't, I didn't, I didn't see any in mine, yeah. That's alright.
I don't, I don't know if I get it.
I don't have a copy.
Thanks.
Yeah, she'd included it in the email she sent out with the agenda for tonight.
I didn't, I didn't see that either. I didn't see the attachments. I saw saw the agenda.
Uh, she, there was another email with it that had the minutes.
Okay.
Or I mean, uh, another attachment, there were two attachments.
But the other one was for next week's meeting. Whatever.
Yeah, I've had one of my, my business complex sending me information that I need.
Yeah.
My email is rejected. It's putting everything in the junk file.
Boy, oh, thank you.
You had the fancy papers.
No, it doesn't matter. Yeah, I'll take it anyway. I print on whatever, my wife picks up her statements. So I think when we look at it, we just start right at the very top. Actually, it should be with number two. Proximity to fire protection water supply. Currently, five, seven, two, one requires residential buildings to be within twenty five hundred linear feet. Chief Stevenson is requesting we reduce that to sixteen hundred square, uh, sixteen hundred linear feet. And that's a simple number change, right? You know, we'll have, we'll have to take it before the town at the June meeting, but unless somebody has a problem with that.
The, the only problem that I perceive is the wording of linear feet. It should be wrote up like travel path or
Oh, yeah.
Right.
There was some other wording. There was two different wordings in the ordinance. There's linear feet. And then there's, um, I don't have it right in front of me. There's another wording that I thought was more appropriate because linear feet could be taken from point A to point B as, as crow flies.
Well, in, in, in five, seven, one, it's rather specific. It says, uh, with twenty five hundred linear feet by established travel way.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so we're just, the only thing we're gonna do is change the twenty five hundred to sixteen hundred.
Yeah, but is that also gonna affect people's homeowner's insurance? I mean, uh,
No, because the homeowner's insurance is typically set up by whatever the
Yeah, but they usually ask where the closest
Right.
That's what I'm trying to say is
Right. I mean, And we're making it closer.
Huh?
We're making it closer, not further away. We're decreasing it. This proposal is to decrease it.
Yeah, but like where I, I've never had a problem where I lived. Okay, I live down in Pine Street. Down off River Road. And I think I was within distance of the fire hydrant.
You're, you're, it's not, this isn't gonna go against anybody that is already grandfathered into the system. The insurance company isn't gonna sit there and say, well, you're it's, as far as I'm aware, it's based on whatever parameter the insurance company is set forth. Right? So if the one particular insurance company sets forth two thousand feet and you're within that, okay, you get a discount. Here's another company says fifteen hundred feet. And you're two thousand feet away, you don't get the discount.
Now, is this for new?
Yes.
That is not that for
Yeah, we can't go back and make someone
We, we cannot retroactively change what has already been approved. So we, we can only go forward from here.
New.
New.
Right.
And that's where I was
Yeah.
thinking we were going backwards.
No, 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 we're going, we're going the other way.
Yeah, but you see what I was
Yeah, and, and most people mo- most new construction, they're putting in residential sprinklers because that, that's the most more affordable option.
Yeah.
So.
I found what you were saying about the, um, the term is, uh, linear feet by established travel way.
Yeah.
Is, is that, that would work.
Yeah.
We'll just keep that, we'll just change the number.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think there, there's, there's one subsection that says twenty five linear feet, and I think we should change it to that wording that you just mentioned.
Okay.
I think we should go through and find anything that says linear feet.
Yeah.
And, and add in the fact that it's by established travel way.
It, oh, it does, uh, it, 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 it might be confusing here. It says, uh, shall be located with twenty five hundred linear feet by established travel way. So linear feet and established travel way, so.
I would go with established travel.
Okay.
Okay.
Just sixteen hundred feet by established travel way. Get rid of linear completely.
Yeah.
Good.
Whatever path he has to take down his hole, you can't just follow the map and go
Yeah.
here to here.
It could be anything in the way, yeah.
I, I'm actually gonna give you a perfect example. I've gone through the entire town and taken, and, and what I did was mapped out what water source would accomplish eighteen hundred feet, right? And it was to buy us some, um, the squiggle of the hose, okay? Goodwin's Mills, they use the same program we do, so I can see what they did. What they did was just put a, a circumference circle around it at a thousand, two thousand. But to give you an idea, I'm gonna use, uh, McKenzie Way, which is off Trail Brook, right? The two thousand foot mark for Arundel is four hundred feet from their thousand foot mark. And fourteen hundred feet short of their two thousand mark, because they went as the crow flies.
Yeah.
We went the roadway. So they're, they're giving this false pretense that they're gonna have coverage from that cistern and they're not.
Yeah.
Right. That's
Right.
You know, thirty five hundred feet away. If they go all the way down Trail Brook. So it's one of those things.
Yep. I'm just glad I live within a I told my, my insurance company I was within a half a mile of the fire station. A little bit more, but, but they were, they were quite happy with me.
Yeah.
Okay, so that we can handle, we'll go through. I've got, uh, the ordinance on my laptop with it, with the search feature on it in, in Word, and I'll go find every place that says linear feet and I'll, I'll take it out. The other one, I'm not sure. Well, let's look at five, seven, four, one.
Uh, next one.
And that would be
The fire sprinkler systems?
No fire monitoring.
Right, but in, it's not listed as fire monitoring in the ordinance. We're gonna have to change it.
Correct.
So if you're looking at the ordinance, five, seven, four is, uh, fire sprinkler systems with designs and all of that good stuff. The chief would like us to change that to require fire alarm monitoring to all non-residential and commercial buildings as well as multifamily.
There is something that, uh, one C says in any commercial or non-residential structure.
Right, but it's, it's about fire sprinklers, not fire monitoring.
Right.
Oh, do we have a separate? We don't have
We don't have a requirement at all.
Well, oh, so it would be, this might need to be a separate number then.
Yeah, I was thinking of like five, seven, four, two.
Four, two, yeah.
And, and set something up for fire alarm monitoring.
Okay, that makes sense.
We're gonna have to figure out what the standards are going to look like. And is it, do we just want a fire alarm or do we, uh, do we want just a bell on the wall making a bunch of noise or do we wanna have have it set up on the phone line to call out to nine one one?
Yeah, that's, that's the idea.
Yeah.
Setup.
Just automatic?
Yeah, automatic. It'd have to be a monitored system of some sort.
Yeah.
Okay. So it would be just like one of the, uh, basically alarm system for a house where if somebody's breaking in like
Yeah.
mine, mine goes off and my security company calls the local sheriff.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah. So it'd be there to say
Now? Is, is any, um, businesses or anything have that type of
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, and we've required some people that should have put one in a long time ago, they just put one in now.
Okay.
And the, the thing is, is depending on the occupancy, it depends on like what type of system can be practical.
Yeah.
Alright, um, this particular, um, business ended up putting a beam up towards their, their peak, right? Because the idea is all the smoke's gonna go, it's gonna break the beam, go through. Instead of them putting, they have a very high pitched roof, right? So instead of putting smoke detectors all down at these lower areas and causing significant, um, cost increases and that type of stuff. Um, the alarm monitoring installer communicated to me and I'm like, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Good.
Right? Because they're all gonna go to this peak. It, it would be different if it was a flat roof.
Yeah.
Right, or a flat ceiling. Because that
Dispersed.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, mushroom would go up there, mushroom. Whereas this is all gonna go up to the peak. So I was like, yep, I'm good with that.
So would this be something that you'd, out of your review, you'd say, make sure, because we wouldn't really know how to make your call.
Yeah, yeah. Most of the time, the, uh, architect or the engineer puts stuff in there.
Okay.
Um, but if we put a requirement in, they're gonna put a minimum standard in, and I can agree to it or disagree, or whoever the chief is can agree to it or disagree, depending on
Most likely engineers or architects, they, they know
Yeah.
what to do.
Yeah, well, most of the time.
Most of the time. I guess that would be your job to review it, make sure that, right?
Yeah.
Is there an NFPA
There is, but
respect that we can quote?
There, there is an NFPA standard.
Yep.
Um, the issue is, is that standard how do I want to word it? It only comes into play, like, let's say you're doing an assembly. Okay? That assembly only comes into play over three hundred people that it's required. And I'm like, uh, no, I, I think three hundred people in a building, there should be some sort of alarm system, right? Or if there's, uh, we had a business in town that, um, had a, it's a self-storage facility and I had them install it. I told them not to go, I didn't need a detector every eight feet. I go, but for every zone, because they put in firewalls, I go, I want a couple of audibles and visuals, because people can be in the self-storage area. There, and it was interior access only. I go, I want them to know if there's some sort of fire, you'll get out.
Right.
Right? And they're like, okay. Most people are okay with it, but this is the thing, is some people are like, nope, I'm under three hundred, I don't need to put it in.
Right. Yes, again.
Well, and that
Well, I mean, if we worded it that said that it's mandatory that they have to be done this way And, and approved by the fire chief.
Yeah, by authority having jurisdiction.
Yep.
So.
Correct. That's what I'm looking for, some kind of words. The authority having jurisdiction would come into conflict. Do you have jurisdiction or does codes have their jurisdiction?
Well, mo- most of the time, that's regarding, uh, fire suppression or, or, um, any sort of life safety, so, um, with Jim, he's been utilizing myself as a resource. Now, if you're right, it could, depending on who comes in. But I think we're all on the same page of
Yeah, and I think, I think right now it works out really well, but one of these days, you're gonna follow Jim into retirement. Hopefully.
Yes.
When is Jim retiring?
Uh, next week?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Our surprise party.
Most likely whoever the new person is, they're gonna refer it to the, the chief any, for the chief anyways.
Yep.
Why would they wanna
Right.
take that risk?
Right.
Would do the actual
Their code enforcement is dealing more with like construction, plumbing, electrical work, that type of stuff, whereas, um, it's the life safety, fire suppression, that type of stuff.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to look for the right words to go put in this that we're gonna propose.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if there was a NFPA, um, but you, you wanna
NFPA Life Safety Code one oh one. Right, but I wanna be a little bit more I guess we're stricter or enforceable for them. That's all.
As needed.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I mean, different little, different, you know, different
Right.
I'm surprised that three hundred seems like a big number.
It does seem like a big number, right? And, and it, it's just, it's, it surprises me too.
Probably bigger than any, any building in this town. Three hundred people or
Hmm, I'm trying to think off the top of my head.
That's a Kenny bomb.
Well, Vinegar Hill can probably have loads of that. That can have quite a few people either inside or out, you know, um,
Bentley's maybe.
Yeah, Bentley's, Bentley's definitely, yeah.
Yeah, but Bentley's would all be outside.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, in, in the, in Clemson weather, they're, they're inside too, so, you know. Uh, Bentley, but Bentley's already has an alarm system.
Yeah.
So, um, they're good there.
Good.
But we don't know what's coming in the future.
It's like the machine shop.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Like, we've got someone that's looking at buying a property and redoing a building and I believe it's in front of the planning board already. And I was just like, alright, like, as of now, nothing's changing, but when you renovate the building, gonna require a fire alarm system and an alarm system. Like, okay. I'm like, that way, when you're stripping everything out and putting stuff back in, you can run all the wiring and do all that.
Of course, um, this, this still has to go to town vote to
Yeah, 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 obviously.
Yeah, so
Right.
if some gets through, I think they'll wanna do it the right way anyway.
Yeah.
The, um, is, it's who I'm thinking of, they, they going over and
Yeah.
Yeah.
So most people, most people are okay with it, right? Some people aren't.
Yeah.
And that, it's more those few.
Had Most of this book is for those few people. Most people wanna do it the right way. It saves lives. It, a lot of times, it's cheaper just to do it the right way once.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, we gotta, we gotta draft some words for this, so we can review it before we send it off to the town agency. Right? Yes.
Yeah, so who's gonna do the wordsmithing?
I'll take a shot at it.
You'd say that, that, um, all non-residential and commercial buildings are required to install, so, something like that.
Are required to ins, to have monitored fire alarm systems installed.
Good. Yeah.
Yep, and not, not just the, the, uh, hang on for a second.
And, and
I'll use the words we've got here, non-residential, in-commercial, as well as multifamily.
Yes.
That's, that was Those words. And I'll kick in the guidelines of NFPA Code one oh one with further restrictions. Right? And it has to be mandatory regardless of the number of people. Has NFPA been adopted by the town? I'll, let me draft something up. I'll put it out here so we can look at it.
Not a, no.
Okay, I, I didn't think it had. So I, I think not referencing that will be a better trick, because the town has not adopted it. If we, if we reference it, we're referencing something that's
We, we follow it and most people, that's what we use as a core, as like, here's the standard, right? Um, and that's what's out there. Uh, it's nationally accepted, et cetera, et cetera. Um, they're just, again, there are the, the smaller ends of things that really, they're allowed to get away with sheep rock or this and they don't meet the system. It's like
Hmm.
Not trying to cost people a lot of money, but like
Let me, let me take a crack at this and I'll send it out to all of you on email to review and then we can discuss it at our next meeting, go to Arundel Business.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll work, right?
Yep.
We'll add an item to the agenda for the next meeting. Just remember, we can't discuss it through email. No, no, send it out. Oh, no, 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 I, that's not for you. That's, we cannot discuss it through email. If we discuss it through email, they can take our computers in a, in a FOIA search.
Yeah.
Because the information is on, on the systems.
Yep.
So we don't discuss anything outside of a public meeting. No, no, no. What I meant was I would send the words to you to look at before the meeting, so we can address it and get your input. Okay? Yep, that'll work. I'm not trying to hide anything. No, I don't wanna hide anything, but I don't want my
Not on this.
I, I don't wanna have to go to jail because Officer O'Malley ain't gonna try to take my computer, which has my business on it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So with five, seven, five.
Okay.
Cisterns.
Cisterns, five, seven, five, they need to be, yeah. Who's responsible?
We're just, could we just have the, the statement that, um, that property owners are responsible for the maintenance of cistern?
The homeowner, homeowner association.
Or, or just
I mean, I'm trying to think of, because
Well, whether it's a homeowner or a business that owns a property, it's not, it's not really a homeowner.
No, you have the development, what we have. Where, um,
Yeah, homeowners association, but we don't wanna limit it just to homeowners association. Wanna include
Or, I mean, uh,
And to our
I mean, because like, uh, where Hisan's is, there's multiple cisterns.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Well, we're good, we're good. We have these things all over town, right? The cisterns all over. I think it needs to be clarified going forward that they have to identify when they put them in, who's going to be responsible for the maintenance going forward. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, the ones that are in there now, I'm not sure we can do anything about. Okay, we can request if one of them is damaged somewhere, that, that home association or the owner of the property fixes it. They may push back and say the town bought it and then at that point it becomes a legal map. But right now, going forward, we can clarify in here, in the, in the ordinance that they have to have in their agreement when they install it, clearly identifying who owns the maintenance of the, the cistern and any repairs to it in the forward going up years.
Whether you want repairs or also like she has said before, but water, uh, uh, what do you call, making sure it's full?
Yeah, testing. I mean, we test them and check the water level.
Yeah, but I'm saying, would, who would be responsible for that? I mean, uh,
Well, I'm a
No, I know you, you're
He doesn't mind doing
Testing it, but to make sure it kept full.
Well, the, the, the thing is, is why this came to light, it's because we have a cistern in town that, um, there was no documentation when after that cistern was initially installed. Okay? Well, the last two years, we have documentation. Alright, so with that, we can develop trending. If, if we have a leak in a cistern, right? We could be like, oh, we put in five hundred gallons this year, what? Or last year, now we put in a thousand gallons, that week's getting worse, right? Um, with that being said, the particular cistern in question, we put sixteen thousand gallons in last year and it's completely empty this year and it's a thirty thousand gallon cistern.
So basically, they don't have the cistern?
Right. And, and, and that's, that, that development was contingent on that cistern being there.
Right.
Because one of the older, well, I say older developments and older newer development.
Seems to me it shouldn't be the town or the fire department's responsibility, because the town doesn't own that property. If, we don't own the land, we can't go in to work on it and
Right.
at testing, which I think, by the way, we should probably add that, a line that, uh, the town will be responsible for testing with the fire department. But, but I think we need to have something put in there, we all agree, um, that I'd say the property owner, not just the homeowner association, because it's whoever owns a property, whether it's a business, it could be, could be a business on Route One, if they have a cistern, they're not a homeowner association. But the property owner shall be responsible for the maintenance of, of the cistern.
Well, but if it's in a subdivision.
Well, if it's homeowner, whether it's
It, but it's, it, if it's not on a homeowner lot, all of those little extra pieces belong to the HOA.
Yeah, the HOA is the homeowner. Or the property owner. Or the manager, management, or whatever.
My, my concern would be at some point, the H, the HOA will go away.
It can never go away.
Yes, I know.
Take a look at the one right up the street here. Up at Clearview, it's gone. That HOA doesn't exist. The town took over the roads and they shut, they, they just walked away and it's not in existence anymore. So we have that issue. And the other issue would be the homeowners don't own all of the land in there.
I guess, I, I'd say the homeowner, uh, association will exist in the registry deeds. It is on, on record, but if, if they've kind of given up, that, that they're on, they're dealing with it, who do you, who do you track down? There is no
Well, we just tell them they can't, it, it belongs to everybody in the association and they're all responsible for paying the maintenance and getting it fixed.
Well, there's a few reasons for having a homeowner, an active homeowner, uh, uh, group. One is the road maintenance, that, so that would be out of Clearview, but, but the other would maybe needs to be the, the, uh, cistern maintenance.
I'm not, I agree with you and I think that's what we need to clarify, but years ago, that wasn't even considered, right?
No.
I guarantee you that all, like especially, and I don't, I don't even know if there is one in Clearview, but all the people up there, I'll bet you would, I guarantee you, you go ask them and they're gonna tell you, fire department owns that.
Yeah.
They take care of that.
Yeah.
They check it, they fill it, they're responsible.
Because
I guarantee
That's who has been
And if it breaks, then it's up to the town to fix it because they own it though.
Yeah. But from going forward, you have to make, make clear that they have to deal with it. To, to have one of the existing ones, it's tough. How do you, you can't add that. It's already a dated record.
No, I get, I get it.
You can't force extra one.
That, that may be an issue of getting a statement on the plan to the effect that in perpetuity, this has to be maintained.
I like that word.
It has to be maintained by the homeowners association, so they're always gonna have a job to do. You know, it's one thing to say here, Andy can well, I was gonna say Reynold, but he's not there anymore. So you keep, you could, but you could always have somebody take the trucks on Saturday morning and go around and check the height, check the, these, the cisterns to see what they look like or check the fire, wants to see what they look like. But in terms of fixing and or replacing, that job belongs to the people who, that it is actually protecting. Because i- if, if there's, the cisterns over here, and I can't think of the name, um,
With the new one?
No, the, the one that, that's being built, the twenty eight, twenty acre home.
Horse.
Huh?
What?
The one that runs through from
Off of Limerick?
Yeah, it goes off Limerick, but it, it connects Talbot Estates? On Islam? Yeah, Islam, yeah. That's, that's the one. Yeah, Talbot Estates. He'll, he'll, one of these days, that'll be finished. It may.
It may.
I was out there the other day, they got another home going in.
They got many.
They got many homes over there.
Yeah.
They've got two or three going.
Uh, but but I I would hate to think that that the property owners in the town of Arundel are going to become responsible. For maintaining the fire prevention system on somebody else's house.
Yeah.
That is in a subdivision that supposedly taking care of it themselves.
And that would benefit only the people who live in there.
And and that makes it, I don't know if that's the case with Islam, I just, they're a big development, so I'm gonna use them as an example, you know?
Would that if either property wise or anything else, would you have that declared on the deed? I mean, uh.
On the plan?
No, no, on the deeds needs. Each, you know, like you have a restriction deed and you can't do this, that, but have that in included in the deed. So that it's sold. It's still automatically.
Agreed, yeah.
Right, he has to know, but but I think that that's the way. From my perspective, that would be the way to go about solving the problem. It belongs. But this group of people, all the people who live, you go away from that HOA. Not my problem, you're still gonna have to be, to pay to have it fixed.
Because they can always get insurance on it. I mean, uh.
Cool, well, this this, okay, this is more complicated language to come up with on this. You know, also, and should we, I think it should be part of the deed.
I, well, I think the good news on this is that. We've got five months before we have to.
Right.
Get it ready to go to the four town meeting.
Yeah.
So we can.
It'll go by quick.
But and we, you know. We're gonna have a a new planner coming in that will be able to help us with the language and if we need to, we can call Leah. And say, this is what we're looking at, let us know.
Yeah.
What what kind of language should we have?
Now, is that Sistern still vacant?
No, it's completely empty.
Now, is that up on his son's area up there?
We don't, we don't, we don't need to know where it is. Doesn't cause too much trouble right now.
Not full of planning.
How long has it been there?
Um, my guess is five, four to five years. Four to six years.
So it's fairly new?
Yes.
Mari, that's not full of planning.
Yeah, it's, no, I'm just.
I know, but.
Huh?
Not something we need to take on at this.
No, 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 but I'm just. Thank you.
That's, I I was just looking at the one below on dry hydrants. When it comes to Sisterns, we also have to have deeded rights of of access for the fire department.
Right, I think, and the chief brought that up at the last meeting, right, the dry hydrant, they have to have something in there that says on their plan or their deed or whatever, that they cannot close that down or block it off. Prior to getting the approval of the town. So that's, yeah, that's item number five, so we've got a rat in there as well.
Five, seven, five, two, C.
Yeah, the the town is responsible for the dry hydrants, so that that's not the same issue, but just access.
Now, for the first couple of years, it's a parcel, isn't it? By hydrants and then how does that?
The the pressurized hydrants, the dry barrel hydrants, like what you see on US Route One, they're responsible for them for three years and then the town takes them over. Because that, in that case, it's a rental agreement that we have with KKW.
Yeah.
Right, so essentially the charge of, let's say it's five hundred dollars a hydrant a year, right? So the, um. The the developer would be responsible for three years and we take it over, so it just gets added to our bill. Of five hundred, you know, and I'm just using as an approximate number. I know that we have, we have like thirty six. Dry hydrant, I mean, um, pressurized hydrants, twelve of those are in a development. So that leaves like twenty four in the bills, like sixteen thousand dollars, so it's what, seven fifty, seven fifty a year rental? Approximately if I'm calculating that right. Yeah, so.
Pretty close.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead and test it.
And that's, that's set forth by the main POC. So.
These are the same people who.
Yep.
That's what our electricity discovered.
Yep, so we really don't have a choice.
Yep.
You know. We'll say KKW is very good at maintaining the hydrants and everything like that, so they shovel them out, we don't have to shovel them out, they. They maintain them, they pump them out, they. They're great, so well, we're seven hundred fifty dollars.
Couple of years back, we put, we put some in down by the golf course on River Road. Yeah, right, all the way at the very end, they would. I I wonder if they're not using that piece of property anymore, are they? It was, it was, uh.
Driving range?
Like a driving range.
Yeah, they still are. They actually put in a, um. A video, uh, driving range.
Oh, okay.
There.
Cool.
But, yeah, there there's hydrants all the way from Durrell's Bridge.
Yep.
All the way down. To the Capeport line.
Okay, so.
Or might be beyond, but we can. We can.
Well, that we should be able to add easy enough to know.
Yeah, we can, we can add in the the, uh.
Yep.
Rights of access without much of a problem.
Oh, I was, yeah, I was looking at the next one.
Commercial development?
Smart development, yeah, uh, maybe we need to have a a whole one that's just for industrial park. We won't get that done tonight.
Well, no, a- and and again, my. The whole premise behind that is, what, if a developer is gonna develop an area, right?
Yeah.
What is your plan of the area? What what are you looking for? You're looking at twenty buildings, you're looking at ten, are you looking at an Amazon warehouse?
Yeah.
What are you looking for, right?
Yeah.
So now we can sit here and have some sort of plan going forward. We understand things change, et cetera. But now we can positionally put Sisterns if we need to, depending on the location, like if it's in a non-hydrant district, right? Strategically place Sisterns, then a hydrant district, okay, how many hydrants are we gonna, pressurized hydrants are we gonna need? Look at the location, get that set up, right? That way, all the utilities, all that water is already put in while the construction's going on, not. Oh, well, now you gotta tear off the road because we need to do this.
Yeah.
Right? That that's the whole premise, and if you're gonna break it down, all right, this is phase one. This is gonna be phase two, this is phase three, great, all right, I'm okay with this. I'm okay with this for phase two and I'm okay with this for phase three or whoever the authority have in jurisdiction, that's kind of. That's all, instead of piecemealing everything together, well, it's just one more building, it's just one more building, it's just one more building.
I think, I think, I think the easiest way for us to address that is to say. This is what's going, has to be done in it, you know, the ordinance, uh, fire hydrants. Pressurized Sistern, whatever. And you hit four, you hit three buildings or you hit four buildings and you jump into the next phase. It's not a question of, well, I'm only gonna put one more building. No, you're putting phase two in over there.
Like we did with, uh, and just keep, uh. The season, the seasonal cottages, how we have phases.
Yep.
Yeah, same idea, and as things went along, you know, your hydrants went in, right?
Yeah, we did it with Bentley's when we, when, when. In fact, he's, they've got to come back before us.
Yeah, but also too, instead of using it instead of industrial park, well, we got everybody who wants to build all these. Uh, storage units. I mean, uh. They, that should be considered. You know, for water, I mean, uh, along the way.
Yep, a- and it has been, everybody that's approached it has been. Um, had some sort of discussion, there's only been one since I've been here, the other one didn't transpire for whatever reason. Um, we have to look at the type of building, if are are there gonna be like outlets in. Each individual unit, what the building is made out of, wood versus non-combustible, that type of stuff, is it gonna be multi-story, is it gonna be single-story? I take all those things into consideration, right? Um. So it it's just. You know. We do have an ordinance for US Route One that says, um. Currently, all the pressurized hydrants are on the eastern side of US Route One, except for the last one at the Bitterford Line, right before the bridge. That's on the west side. We can require based on, um, occupancy, fire load and everything like that, to have them put one on the eastern side if necessary. So.
Basically, they need to develop a strategic plan if they're gonna come in some kind of industrial park.
Right.
Well, even if it's not gonna in industrial park. We've got lots of places around in town that have large lots of land.
Yep.
Yeah.
Hundred, hundred acres of land, well, if you've got a hundred acres of land and you wanna put a, some kind of a business on there. Uh. Contract, uh, not contractor, but. Some kind of a manufacturing business. You've got lots of land and you want to, well, if you're gonna put in one, sooner or later, there's gonna be two. You know, and we we should be planning when the first one goes in.
First, first one, I think it gets a pass, but you have two or three.
No, I thi- I think the first one, it doesn't get a pass. I think the first one gets notified that you're starting an industrial park in this area.
But we don't. We don't always know if they're starting industrial park, might just be.
That's engineering.
But that's, that's, my point is, you're right, we don't know, so we're going to treat you as if you are. You know, because after the fact, you can't do it. See, we tell them. You look, it looks as if you're going to be doing, are you gonna put another building in here? Yes, I am, okay, guess what? That's an industrial park.
So the smart thing would be if our developer, no, I'll never, I'll never put another building in.
Put that in writing, because I wanna, I wanna hang my hat on it three years from now, when you come in and say I wanna put in another building.
Right, well, we have certainly had development.
Oh, yeah, we have.
I I don't think I'm gonna do anything else until I come up with the next, the next idea, funding.
And and that's, that's problem. We have that current situation, right, so then, then I required a Sistern and it was.
So it.
You know, it was difficult.
I guess I, we have to have to be careful, I mean, i- is it all right for us to just tell them, we think you're gonna be. Doing a big development, so you you need to put the hydrant in now?
Well, I think, I think the real question is, is what's the strategic plan, right? What what are you planning on doing with this property? Don't, don't, but, I mean, I think we can all agree, you buy a hundred acre lot. Right, and you're saying, oh, I'm just gonna put one building on. We all know that's false.
It's gonna be a big.
You don't have the crystal ball.
Uh huh.
You don't have a crystal ball what's gonna happen in the future.
Right, so it's just, it it's one of those things. I I think, you know, depending on the location of where it is, the. The accessibility, like US Route One, you're able to ru- ru- run that water line. From, from the, um, to the building or or to the development with, I say relative ease, but you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Um, whereas with with Sisterns. Well, it's one of those things, what are you building the material, what are you building? Because you're not on US Route One, we have hydrants every two thousand feet on US Route One. Okay, so we can go one way or another, we can get water there with relative ease, we don't have a huge setback from anything. Um, if there is, I think the largest setback is, I can't think of the road, um, by Arundel Motors.
What, Sam's way?
No, Arundel Motors, not Arundel Ford.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Brockaroo?
No, the one on the train side is Arundel Motors, across the entire warehouse, right? I think that's like the longest setback that it doesn't have a hydrant, right? E- everybody else is, has has hydrants. You know, that are relatively close.
Yep.
We've, um, marked everything off, uh, we even have a new development coming to town, I've already marked that off, they're good, like, it's pretty much a one-truck leg. Um, so it it's, when we get into other areas, rural, um, you know, the Alpha Road quarter, that's where we run into some problems.
So, line more in Sisterns and ponds and.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let me take a stab at.
But, but also as you were saying, if industrial, if you're on your hundred acres. If you put your biohydrant in now, so you have at least if you got your lecture or anything else. You can at least lay your line to where the next one is without tearing everything up.
Right, yeah.
Save money in the end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and and that's the thing, like, the option was given for thirty thousand or fifteen and there. There was some discussion, shall we say. Um, and I agreed that fifteen would be appropriate, we'll consider this. The building is being built, this building, that building, as phase one, anything beyond that's gonna be phase two, we're gonna require another system.
I mean, even as like when you had possibly with that new campground. Possibly coming in, which is on the opposite side, we already said about water and it was agreeable. So that if the units will be all taken care of.
Right, yeah, there, there, I've already been in discussions with them, they're gonna put a hydrant right at the Y, so.
I'm just trying to keep names. Yeah, well, that.
That will, that will be a fun one to watch. That's gonna be one.
Okay.
When I, when I think about that one, that's gonna be like, I'm gonna reach out the window to grab a cup of coffee from my neighbor who's gonna reach out and hand it back over, because they're awfully close together.
Um. They exist.
Yeah, they do.
In other areas, and they're sold out, so.
Hey. I'm looking at it going, you wanna live that close to your neighbor, go right ahead.
Go with this.
Yeah.
I wanna be able, I I did that when I lived in the city and when I lived in Chicago and I don't wanna do that again, it's too close.
All right, okay, I'll, I'll take an initial stab at this. And, um. Send it out and we can discuss it at our next meeting.
Yep.
Under other business.
And I'll, I'll go through and I'll find the, uh, any, any reference to linear feet and remove it. Yep.
Yeah, I think there's only, I think it's only in there two or three times.
Yes, that's, I don't think it's in there very much, Bill, no. Okay.
We're gonna have anything else, Eddie? When is the next planning board meeting?
The next planning board meeting is a week from tonight. Yeah. Oh, I don't think we'll be ready then.
Okay.
After that, it's after the holidays.
Yeah, we can't get it posted and on the agenda anyway, so we're looking at January.
That's fine.
I thought the fourteenth was already taken by, um.
Seventeen. The seventeenth.
Okay.
We're having a special recall election.
Right.
We have to have the election anyway because she didn't resign in time.
Yeah.
We moved, we moved our meeting from the seventeenth to the tenth.
Okay, that's good.
Right.
So, most likely, I'll have a rough draft for next week. I won't have anything done that we can finalize, I'll, I'll send you a copy of whatever I put out to the guys.
Right.
And, uh. If the chair is happy, we can discuss it under other business or maybe just take a look and we'll discuss it after meeting, after that, when we get it on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. But from an agenda point of view, the earliest is gonna be the seventh. As we do the.
January?
Yeah, we do the first and third. January seventh is the first.
There you go.
Dave, did you say you had any communication with, uh?
Life either, I really enjoy the time off.
One eleven and.
No, it it would be main water that you'd have to communicate with and I I don't think they're gonna, I I don't think there's the revenue that they want for the expansion of that line.
No, I'm just saying. No, they're allowed, I mean, uh, any kind of type of communication. I mean, because you got the gas station going down there, I mean, that's.
So you're talking Bitterford Fire or Main Water? Main Water runs the water lines, it's not Bitterford anymore.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, it would have to be.
Yeah, it'd be Main Water.
Bought out by Main Water.
Yeah, they put the new facility in on South Street. Um. I I can be in conversation with them, but I don't think they're gonna do it.
Have they, have they done anything on, uh, Andrews Road?
No.
Okay. I could, I know they've got some kind of crazy development going in up there. I didn't know if they had.
They may cross the road, but I don't think they're. I don't know how quickly that development's gonna be developed.
It may be a while.
Hmm, do you have anything else for us?
No, um.
I just wanna make sure while we.
Not right now. Yeah, I mean, I'm always available, well, I say I'm always available, uh, I'm available two to three days a week in my schedule.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we have your concerns.
Yeah, no, I think, I I think uh, everything's good, again, it wasn't super crazy. Just things that people, people haven't talked about previously, I guess, and, and, you know, um. We don't know what we don't know until we don't know what we don't know, right? So it's one of those things that, okay. Stuff's getting super expensive now, we can't put it all on the town to manipulate it. Before.
I don't, I don't know what I don't know until I don't know that I don't know it. Sounds like a line from Sergeant Schultz.
Uh, we actually use it a lot in the fire service. I mean, I can sit there and instruct people all day long, but.
Yeah.
You know. You don't know what you don't know, and you don't know what you don't know.
Yeah. I've got a seminar I'm doing on Thursday on tax, on taxes over in New Hampshire. We're gonna tell all these people, this is all the stuff that you need to know, and they're gonna forget it five minutes, seven minutes, walk out the door.
Yep.
And then, then they'll tell the, they'll get called by the IRS and they'll say, you did this. We have a record that you got trained in doing that, so don't tell me that I know what you're doing. Good time.
Gentlemen.
Do it during.
All right, well, have a nice holiday season, everybody.